Okay, welcome everybody in the audience and those on YouTube. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. Today's Wednesday, December 27th. This time I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Everyone have a chance to look at the agenda. There's no suggestions or corrections. I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve agenda.
With a second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Rita's not coming in?
Gabby is coming in.
Gabby's coming in, okay. Well, she's coming in. You can just check out the bills, look and see if there's anything infusion. Morning Gabby, come on up, you're up next. This is an action item, claims, board orders and junior college. I didn't see any junior colleges, I missed those?
We didn't have any junior colleges.
I have one question. I wasn't sure what on. Maybe. Axon Enterprise, I think this is for the sheriff's department, 2216.
Can you spell that for me, Mr. Chairman?
That was just a new one, A-X-O-N Enterprise Incorporated. The lead's online too. One right above it, 2147, 2148. Is that a monthly dog or is that a? Well, I just lost it. Where'd we go?
What are you looking at, Bill?
It's the second page, about 10, 12 lines down. It's 2147 and 2148. I just didn't know what they were. It says sheriff claims. If those are body cameras.
No, that's not. The axion is our body cameras.
There's something in Surefire that were lights. I don't know what the lights were.
Surefire has to do with tactical equipment.
Flashlight kind of thing?
That was one of the board orders that was sent, so the whole thing is air attached with the invoice.
Okay, these are for the tasers. So these are the taser cartridges and batteries.
Doug, I noticed that the sheriff also bought a car.
That's correct.
And that's out of?
Capital.
The capital.
Fund, that's correct.
Was that planned through the CIP or was that?
It was not planned. Captain Stanbaugh will be presenting on that at, I would assuming during the sheriff's presentation. That's where it's on the agenda.
Okay, the other one I had Gabby was invoice 2240 Arrow Clean. Twenty-six thousand.
That is for that device, for the cleaning device for the jail?
Oh, that's right. With the special cleaner stuff in it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Clean device system.
If there's any other questions, this would be the time. If not, I think we had.
Mr. Chairman, if I can?
We're gonna be approving that vehicle before we know why we bought it?
Um, you can hold that back or. Dave, why don't you come on up now and just give us a brief on that vehicle? Good morning. Um, if I remember, that was for a Durangle, a used one?
Yes.
And that was one they had here with Cascade Auto or somewhere?
No, no, it's down in Utah. Um, and it's for the patrol lieutenant, so he can give up his fully outfitted car to a patrol deputy. This one will be outfitted for a lieutenant. Won't have all the lights and marked or anything like that. We can't get cars. So.
This is part of the stuff though that, because you guys had approved, gosh, eight of them or something like that. So this is in replacement of another one we can't get?
Well, we gave the Durangle, or the Ford Explorer, the sheriff's old car, never got anything back for it. Um, so that car was given to, I don't know who's driving it now, buildings or somebody's driving it now. And this is in place of that, basically.
Okay. Will you upgrade the Excel spreadsheet that you had on all your vehicles and how old they are and send that to us?
Yeah.
And then Dave, were we paying this out of the Cascade funds?
Yes.
So this is mainly for patrol in this end or is it just everywhere?
It's used for the lieutenant to get everywhere.
Is it meant to be just an unmarked car?
Yes.
When you say we can't get vehicles, just physically can't get them?
We, the order is out right now. We would have ordered them back this spring. We would not have seen them until October of next year.
Oh, my goodness.
We keep feeling like we're buying four at a time, eight at a time, and we're not getting, we're still not catching up on what we've got, so.
It's amazing.
Yeah. Fly chain issues still.
And then, once we get them, it's another six to eight months out to get them outfitted. By then, the warranty's up on them. So, trying our best to look at other ways of getting vehicles. This one's a low mileage.
Hey.
You want the?
Yeah, you can bring it up. Well, I had another question for Gabby. On the Lake Shore disposal and the Timber Creek recycling, did that bill come from Lake Shore?
Yes.
So did they add the 15% to it?
They did. I don't think it was a 15%, I think it was 5%. But that is the one that we are going to be submitting for the grant or the Woody Debris Program. We are, Kenzie Castro will be submitting reimbursement for that expenditure.
So Scott had wanted to do, what else, software with those funds?
And there'll be money available.
There will be, okay.
Yep, and Kenzie is fully aware of that as well.
So the total cost to grind all that, both construction and Woody Debris was 246,000, is that correct?
That is correct.
But that was also two years' worth. If we were doing it annually, it should be half that.
Yeah, I just. We're gonna have to jump that budget up here if we're gonna do this every year?
I, I think, if you recall, commissioners were also trying to determine if we're going to apply for a grant to purchase the equipment, to do it ourselves.
Doug, you know, was there any income generated from that? Did they sell it to Timber Creek or? No, they just gave it to them and?
Yeah, I think the product was just kept by Timber Creek. Or I don't know if they made an agreement to take it to the Tamarack.
Actually sold it to somebody. Somebody took it for, what is it, the bedding, a calf bedding?
Probably, am I the Woody Debris or not the CND?
The CND, actually, they were able to sell too. Somebody took that for some kind of bedding.
CND?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Okay. Any more questions? Not I entertain a motion, paid the claims, the board order claims and no junior college.
I'm moved.
I got, moved in second, paid the claims, board order claims, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Have to learn a whole nother job under Tyler. Thank heavens, you're cross-trained. He is probably enjoying downtime. I think everybody's in a food coma today. I know I am.
Coming down off the tree?
I found out this morning that Gabby is the decorating queen.
Everybody's sitting out there just going, well. Nobody wants to be here, we should be off this week. What is wrong with us?
I tried and you guys wouldn't do it.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to our like official reports. First one up is Sue, good morning.
Good morning. I just have one cancellation. Payette Land Trust is cancellation 15, parcel number RP 18 North, 03 East, section 35, 7355. Noreen had accidentally taken them out of ag when they had requested a year of rest. This is the parcel on the corner of Farm to Market and Potter, be the northwest corner. Anyway, so it was taken out in error, so we put it back in. And so, the original value was 564,935. We're asking that you cancel 558,432, so that their value of 6,503 will go back into effect for ag for '23.
Do they have to have a farm plan or anything that states that this is a normal practice?
They have to request it, which they did, but she, usually we send out a letter of rest, so they have documentation. And it slipped through the cracks. And so, she had, they, we did have documentation from them. We just failed to send them documentation.
Year love, one year rest?
So how is this working now? Because of the way that the legislation was, we can't reimburse the, the other districts that get these funds or whatever. Is there, has it changed the way that we're actually doing things? With these ones coming in after?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so, well, they, they don't have to pay this year's taxes then? Or they do have to pay this and then go back on?
Well, they'll pay the taxes on 6,503 rather than 564,000.
Okay.
Well, less than that after the cancellation, but. Um, not to my knowledge.
So the other taxing districts just basically get their money and the counties out?
What it does is you have other, the value shifted to the rest of the taxpayers and they pay, make the difference up. This is a value cancellation, not a tax cancellation.
I think there's a margin of, for errors, that they all probably take into consideration. You know, like if they're supposed to get 70,000, let's just say, I would assume they'd have about a $5,000 buffer. And Johanna can speak to that.
I'll comment. So ever, since the taxes have been billed, any value cancellations really are like a tax cancellation at this point. So when we cancel the value, the taxes do not go to any of the taxing districts, including the county.
Okay.
Okay, so I entertain a motion for this. Which one is it? It's, um.
Value cancellation of 15. So, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve the value cancellation 15 for the Payette Land Trust.
Second. With a second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And that tells you how important those ag exemptions are. That's a huge cancellation.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Sue, when they do, when they call it an ag cancellation like that, but it's ag. Do they have to actually use the land for ag? I mean, I'm talking about farming it or running animals on it, you know, stock and whatnot?
Yes, and so every year, I mean, we've really cracked down. And we are auditing and now we have better tools. We have the tablets, you know, that tell us exactly where the boundaries of the properties are. So as we get better technology and better tools to do our job, we are being able to be more accurate. So let's say we had a property owner that had 160 acre parcel. And let's say they're only grazing 100 acres of it. Well, we can now measure that out and take the 60 acres out that they're not using for agricultural purposes. And they get full market value on that, but still get the ag exemption on the 100 that they are using. So as time goes by, we are getting more and more accurate because we have better tools.
Sure, sure.
To do our job.
And you can no longer use horses?
It's in Idaho code that if horses are used for pleasure, they do not qualify a piece of property for the ag exemption. If they are working horses, they do. And so what we require is, like a Schedule F, which we don't keep those on file because they have social security numbers on them. And so we ask for them to bring them in so that we can view or blackout, wipe out the social security number. But to prove that, you know, they're claiming any income and/or expenses associated with those horses.
That could be a gray area.
Well, I know when they took the horse exemption away for recreational horses, it of course killed the hay market. Because now the horses aren't there to demand for the hay.
Right.
There's a ripple effect that goes right on down when they do stuff like that. And what's the minimum now, five acres to be a farm?
So, in Idaho code, they have to have over five acres.
Over five.
Is, is how it reads. So if they have 5.01 acres, like total acreage, and that can include their home site.
Right.
Then they can qualify for three or four acres on the egg exemption if they're.
And then they don't have to show the $1,000 a year gross income?
That's only if they're under five acres. So if we have, which I think I, as far as I can remember, we only have one parcel. And they're actually a nursery and they're only like 1.7 acres. So where the building is where their office is, we've actually charged them full market value for a tiny postage stamp of square footage on the land value. Because they're commercial as well. But they are receiving an egg exemption on the, and they did jump through all the hoops and prove that everything that Idaho code says to be able to keep that exemption. And, and they have continued to do that, so.
Okay. Anything else you want to?
No, that's all I've got for you today. Um, we did get our first BTA decision and it was for Mr. Swenson.
You might want to go to the mic so people have a mic.
They lowered his land value only. Uh, I believe it was 17,778 dollars in value. So I'll be on next week's agenda for the cancellation on that. I'm hoping maybe to get another one or two in, so I don't have to, you know. So I, I thought that might have set a precedence, because remember their big argument was we want the reduction on our improvements as well, and they didn't do it.
Right.
So I was grateful for that.
Hey, any more questions? All right.
Anything else?
Thank you, thank you.
Have a great day. Mr. Miller.
Commissioners, good morning.
Morning.
I've been sharing with you that our office has been working with department heads on completing the annual financial reports. You'll see on the agenda today is the street financial report. Hopefully you guys had the opportunity to review that. That was presented in your packet. That will be presented by road director Jeff McFadden at 11:00. And also, the public defense annual report was also provided. And that was another report that our office had been working on. We have completed that and are hoping for your approval. So just kind of giving you an overview of the final annual financial reports that our office is working on. The last one is the waterways and snowmobile. I've presented this a few times, but I am working on that. The deadline is January 31st and I will be able to make sure that that is accomplished before the 31st of January. So anticipate that report being presented to you in the next couple of weeks. Wanted to give you an update of a position change in the court clerk's office. Leanne Zwinkle will be stepping back as the court clerk supervisor. In, this has been planned. This was something that she wanted to do in her preparation for retirement in a few years. Not anything immediate, immediately, but in the next few years, she is planning on retirement and wanted to take a step back. So we did promote Tammy Angier will be the court clerk supervisor effective January 2nd. So wanted to make sure that the commissioners were aware of that position change within our office.
Congratulations.
Thompson will be attending the annual IAC Clerks Recorder's Election Conference. We're excited to have that conference with the new Secretary of State. Um, so we're prepared for a great three-day conference. Unfortunately, I do have to mediate that or not mediate it, but lead it as the president of the Clerks Executive Committee. I will be emceeing that, so I'm a little nervous about doing that, but.
Oh, you're doing fine.
It is what it is.
Have Rich take pictures.
Okay, we will. I think the, the commissioners received the email from IAC that the 31st is the last day to sign up for committees. Uh, so if you have not signed up for a committee, this is other elected officials too, the 31st, I think maybe it's even the 29th. Might be the last day for elected officials to sign up for committees. Just make sure to remember that and also make sure to register, I think the deadline to register for the midwinter conference is on the 24th for the. I don't know if that's the early bird registration or if that's the last day to register. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Uh, we're also working, lastly, we're working with the outside auditor to conduct our audit in February. I don't know if I've shared that with the commissioners, but our outside audit is going to be scheduled for the second week of February. Uh, so we're getting prepared for that.
That Jason?
Uh, that's with Zwygarden Associates, yeah. With Jordan.
Jordan.
Tell the clerk that the new website is amazing. It was so much easier to file.
The Secretary of State?
Yes.
Okay.
So it was, it was so much better than the last one. Very intuitive.
For the commissioners and for those watching online, as well as in attendance today, we don't have, the new elections calendar hasn't. The, the elections calendar is available on the website for the Secretary of State's for 2024. However, the declaration of candidacy forms aren't going to be available until the second week of January. So if you are wanting to declare for candidacy for the positions that are open for election for the, the primary in May. Um, the deadline, I believe, to have those submitted to our office, I think it starts March 5th and ends March 14th. Don't quote me on those dates, but I believe that's what I, but we don't have, the declaration of candidacy forms are not available yet. So please be patient until the Secretary of State presents those and then our office will have them available. If you are running and you want to begin campaigning, you can do that now. Again, want to share that to everyone that you can begin campaigning, you can be collecting money. But definitely make sure that you're following the appropriate procedures, signing up on the website for the campaign finance report through the Secretary of State's website.
The only question that I would have for them, so when I signed up, it just said, it was like I was a candidate and not an existing office. And so I had to state that my next time to run was 2026, since I'm not running this next time. So that was a little bit, you know, hopefully I did that correctly. That was the only way I could figure out to do it.
You're not sure if you're running to get next time.
Well, I just wanted to give potential candidates an update of where we were at with the declaration of candidacy forms regarding the new elections websites. And commissioners, with that, I will stand for any other additional questions.
Good information. All right, thank you. Prosecutor, Mr. Oki.
Morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Prosecutor Nagel sends his holiday greetings and regrets for not being able to make it today. His, he and his family are traveling back from their, from their Christmas break. So I'm here in his stead. Things are not a lot new to report. We did have a jury trial last week. It was a misdemeanor trial, so Ashley handled that one, did an exceptionally good job, resulted in a conviction. And we, we don't, don't really celebrate convictions. That usually is a, you know, a result of something bad that happened. But we do certainly acknowledge hard work and, uh, you know, the, the skill that it takes to, to be successful in the courtroom is something that we do like to acknowledge. And she certainly has earned that through her, through her efforts. This isn't her first, this isn't her first trial since she started with us and, and has, has done a phenomenally good job. So, uh, kudos to her for all that work. Pardon me?
On, I, just I don't know. I wasn't aware that misdemeanors actually went to a jury trial. Is that normal?
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think a whole lot of cases go to trial because there's opportunities to, to plead those out. But if there is no plea agreement, then, then they are tried to a jury. It's a six, six-person jury and it goes through the normal, the, the same process for a criminal trial as you would with felony trial. So, so yes, it's, a lot of work goes into preparing for those, for those trials, picking a jury, putting on, you know, witnesses and evidence that, that takes a lot of time and effort and, and skill to, to get that from the, from start to completion. So, uh, I think we've had, boy, I would only be guessing at the number of, of trials, misdemeanor trials since Prosecutor Nagel started. But it's been several and, and most of the time with, with pretty favorable outcomes, which is, which is very good.
Well, and especially the week before Christmas, putting together a jury can be challenging.
It was, yeah. A lot of people were traveling. It was, you know, just a couple of days before. Uh, and so, you know, again, that, that requires some commitment from members of the community to, to do their, their civic duty and, and be present and, and participate. It was one-day trial, which is good. And you go, you know, lengthy trials that take more than one day is, those are obviously more difficult and more time-consuming. But, uh, was able to get that completed before, before the holidays, so everybody could have a, have a good, good Christmas and go home and relax a little bit, so.
Because they chose to go to trial, that extra cost burden is put upon them, correct?
Uh, well, the, the, there is, there is some cost to the taxpayers for, for criminal trials, obviously. But there's certainly, when there's a conviction, there's going to be restitution and, and court costs sometimes that are shifted to the, shifted to the defendant. So most of the time, the restitution is related to the damage that was caused that resulted in the trial. So the victims of the, victims of the crime that was committed are the ones that we focus on getting restitution.
Well, and I know in the bills this morning, we paid all those juror, juror claims this morning, so.
Yeah.
Right on top of that, which is great.
Yep. So anyway, if you get a chance to, uh, see Ashley, let her know that we're appreciative of her work and, and all the effort that she puts into preparing for trials. And even the cases that you don't hear about because they don't go to trial. Uh, her, her workload is, is pretty significant and, and she is handling those. And, and when there is opportunities that make sense to, to plead those down and negotiate with defendants in those case, she certainly does that. And, and we're, our, ultimately the goal is for a fair outcome for everybody. And make sure that we're supporting the law enforcement and the message gets out to the community that we're working hard to keep, keep the community safe. And that's the, that's ultimately the goal of taking these kind of cases to trial, so.
Anything else?
Stand for questions if you have any. Great.
You feeling better?
Still a little gimpy.
Are you really?
That's, that's, Commissioner Thompson, that, that's probably a, a function of age, not so much the, uh, the, the trauma that was suffered.
Understand.
Hey, our next victim is sheriff. Dave, come on up. You have an action item, but if there's anything you want to report first, why have that?
No, it's been quiet. This, I think our lack of snow is keeping us quiet. We're ready for it though when it comes. All set up. Everything's tracked up. I think we have one UTV that's still wheeled, just because we don't, we don't need tracks yet, so we're keeping one wheeled. But other than that, it's been really. But other than that, it's been really quiet.
Well, is the lake frozen over yet?
I can't tell you that. I heard the south end is or maybe the north end is.
There's probably not any ice fishermen either, huh?
Yeah. I haven't seen any fishermen parked at Stonebreaker.
Definitely a different kind of winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, my call's not even close.
It's quiet.
Okay, you have an action item?
It was the car, I believe.
Well, my question, I, and I didn't see it, was are you guys trading in a Lincoln Bountiful?
That's the name of the, that's the name of the company, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, that's the name of the car dealership.
That's correct.
Oh, I see. I thought maybe you were trading in something.
No, this was, and the, the reason we, this works out pretty well for us because it's ten minutes away from who outfits our vehicles for us too, so they're just going to drive it over there and drop it off for us. So, and then we'll just have to get down there to pick it up when it's done.
The total cost is twenty-three thousand, twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we, I guess authorize the purchase of the two thousand and nineteen Dodge Durango.
One second.
Motion in a second. Any more questions? Oh, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
That's the actual contract, Mr. Chairman, with the claim.
We just, is this one place to sign or you're going to be signing all of them?
Hey, do you know?
You want me to do the claim form too?
Price for um, out feed them costs us?
It all depends on what we put in them. I, it's, it's upwards of seventeen now for a full patrol vehicle. Um, this vehicle, we're trying to get it in under probably seven to eight, depending on, yeah, depending on what we put in.
And then do you want me to sign the claim? You want us to sign it?
Yes, please. And then if the other commissioners can sign that document.
That's a pretty good buy.
Yeah.
Yeah, not bad.
It's a turn.
We all have, there's two pages there.
I think it was an admin vehicle for the state of Utah, so um, it didn't get a whole lot of work.
Um, while those guys are signing, have you picked the backcountry deputies yet? Are you guys still going through that?
No, we'll have, we've got that covered.
You can kind of robe it?
Yeah, we're going to robe it, I think. I don't think the sheriff's uh ready to name anybody. I think we want to give a uh, give a fair chance to everybody to work it and get a feel for what it's about. It, it'll be staff, no question about it. It's just, um, yeah, I don't know if uh he's ready to put in. I know Danny's going to be working at Pierce, Deputy Pierce, but uh, as far as uh, the second one, um, I think we're just going to rotate it, but that's, that's subject to change. It'll be, it'll be filled.
My question on that, we talked about this originally when we approved these, and that was they're supposed to be getting specialty training on these positions? And so by roving it, we're not getting the specialty training that these guys are going to be needing unless everybody's getting that training.
They're um, on the train that we've had, they've had, it isn't just those two deputies that went last year, it was multiple deputies that filled in. Um, and it, and it's basically given us more of a pool to pick from when they, when we get just not two deputies trained and it, and it's the pool of deputies that we can get up there. I believe it's the two deputies and I think two to three others that went to an avalanche class last year.
Okay.
So if we just leave it to the two deputy and then one, and one of the deputies that was assigned last year has since retired. So we've at least have three other deputies that went to that class year, last year that are trained. But if we just keep it with those two deputies, then we're not going to have the pool that we can draw from. If something goes sideways, um, we're going to need as many people trained as we can.
I think that's a great idea. Read that out.
Well, and search and rescue, if they have that training also, they're back there to support also, but.
We're, that's, we're, we're intermingled deeply with search and rescue and their winter response team, uh, that we're heavily involved with them.
Even in summer, we don't want to see the video that we saw last time we had a plane crash, so.
Oh.
Those guys, everyone needs to be fully trained in whatever they need to be.
Yeah, and there's, it's, it, you know, there's some guys that aren't, aren't uh comfortable or gals that aren't comfortable getting on a snowmobile or getting into backcountry in the snow and there's some that don't like going out of helicopter three hundred feet, you know, and, and we can't force them to do that. So we got to find the people that are comfortable in doing that stuff and then get them trained up in that area.
Is our search and rescue fully staffed? Are they short or where are they?
I don't think they have a staffing number. They're, they're uh, they're staffed up probably what it's been for the last several years. They're, you know, they're probably, I'd say twenty to thirty people involved with them right now. Um, but they're, they're working on building their numbers.
Okay. They're going to be radioed up, just like you guys are going to be radioed up, all uh, trying to get everybody involved with the same radios that we're doing with all the departments.
Yeah, it's, it's getting them the right radios and getting them the right frequencies and stuff. Um, I don't know who, I think uh, one of the members is working on that right now.
Awesome.
All, it's all money, so you have to find out the, find out what the cost of the radios are going to be.
That's life, it's all money.
It's always.
All of us.
All the money.
Exactly. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
You want to pick up? Do you have that, or do you take?
No, 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 no. If you can, so we're going to mail the check. Do you want us to mail the sales contract with that check or can you coordinate with? Can you reach out to them and see what they want?
Yeah.
And then let Gabrielle know? Because we'll, we'll be mailing the check today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up's the treasurer, Joanna.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. We made it to the property tax deadline date. Uh, that was last Wednesday. Um, the first thing that I want to say is I, I really want to do a shout out to my staff. Uh, this year's tax season went exceptionally well and they all worked so very hard um to process payments with accuracy and get them in quick so that we didn't get behind. And um, anyway, the busy part of the tax season is over now and it was, it was wonderful this year. So huge shout out to Alisa, Rich and Casey, and thank you for all of their help. Um, as of this morning, we've collected twenty-two million, five hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred and ten dollars of the two thousand and twenty-three tax. Um, I did not do a full analysis on all of the tax collected because yesterday we went to the, pick up the mail and again had another large crate of mail. So we are still processing quite a few payments. The majority of that that came in yesterday was postmarked before the deadline. So um, I, in two weeks from now, when I give my commissioner update, I'll do a full breakdown of property taxes collected and whatnot, but uh, we're still, still working through those and if you get a chance to say thanks to my staff when you are walking by, they really did a phenomenal job this year, so.
Well, Joanna, just a quick question, they're due the twentieth, right?
Correct.
But these have been sitting in the post office for that long?
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
Um, we receive postmarked envelopes all the way back to November twenty-seventh yesterday. So yesterday, we had November twenty-seventh, December second, December fifth, uh, it's all across the board. So we actually had a substantial amount of mail from like the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth yesterday as well.
You're going to be getting it for two weeks.
US Post Office is holding it for, who, who knows why?
You know, I think that the US Post Office is a big black box of I don't know. Um, the, I commend them because it's a busy time of year to be delivering packages and whatnot for Christmas and Christmas cards and then also to deal with tax payments on top of that. I can't even imagine the amount of work that they go through. Um, I will say that we have been encouraging people more and more to use the electronic payment system because it's easier for my staff, um, and it's more reliable. You get same day confirmation and the fees essentially are about the same as using the mail.
When you do electronic, you have to do that through the bank or they just call in, use their credit card number or what do they do?
So you can make payments on our website. If you go to the treasurer's page, there's a button that says pay property taxes online. You can pay by credit card, which has a two and a half percent fee, or you can pay by e-check, which is the same as writing a check out, and that's a flat one dollar fee regardless of how much you're paying or how many parcels you're paying. So with a stamp, you know, in the high sixty cents and the envelopes and the checks and all of that, really it's more cost effective to do an electronic e-payment. Uh, you can call in and do it over the phone as well. That obviously takes staff time and the phone is ringing constantly and you would have to call during business hours, but you can make an electronic payment online up until midnight on the twentieth and still have it counted as an on-time payment.
You have to realize that some people paying their taxes is their social event of the year.
Exactly, and we do appreciate and accommodate those people as well.
The elders.
We need mental health counseling.
Hey, wait till April fifteenth to put it in the mailbox.
Yep.
That was really easy online. I did that this year, was super simple.
Yeah, it's pretty slick. So we um, have been encouraging more and more people to go that way, especially as we hear stories of, you know, people saying, I, I put it in the post office, I don't know where it went, or, you know, sometimes we'll receive mail that's been damaged and we have to request a new payment form and um, it just, it takes a little bit of the stress and the uncertainty out of it, so.
Interesting.
Yeah. Any other questions about Tax Drive? Hey, just a few other things that uh, I want to talk about looking forward. Um, my family and I are actually going on vacation, so I will be gone next week and Rich will be out at the elections conference, so Alisa and Casey will be holding down the office. And then um, January first marks the start of our tax deed process. So uh, at the beginning of January, we go through and we run some reports and figure out who all is on that tax deed list, and that is folks who have uh, delinquent taxes from the year two thousand and twenty through this year. So um, at the next meeting, I should be able to update you on that list and how many people are, are facing tax deed this year, and I will start the calendar of that process.
Always something to do.
Always something to do.
Good, well, you deserve a well, long vacation. I hope you're going somewhere warm.
I am.
Like outside.
Yes. I'm, I'm looking forward to it very much.
Everybody is sick down south, just been there.
Oh, okay.
You don't want to go down south.
Okay, we'll avoid that area.
Wear your mask on the airlines. Jacob's sick too, he's got back.
Okay.
All right.
Have a great day.
Have a great day, thank you.
We'll move down into department heads. Um, and that's, I guess, not available. Let me see if she's. Well, that's right, she's gone.
It's really dark in her office.
So we're going to go to Court Services. Jock, come on up. Good morning, appreciate you being here.
Good morning, everybody. I can promise you, I'm going to keep this under the five minute mark. But anyway, being the holiday season, as a PO, we're on high alert. Our senses are tuned into our highest risk clients. Do a lot of legwork this time of year, working with those, a small population that are the highest risk, as you can imagine. We work on some of the tools we have in our toolbox to keep their mind focused, uh, because the stressors of the holidays with, as you can imagine, the family and trauma and just everything that goes into the driving force behind the addiction issues and the criminality. So we work with them to hook them up with their counselors on a regular, consistent basis to make sure that they're getting that support, the professional support. Uh, we also make sure they have their sponsors or sober supports on speed dial this time of year, so at two in the morning, case of the you-know-whats, they have a phone number and somebody they can reach out to. Um, in addition, I also call my top five or ten clients, highest risk people, and I have a conversation with them going into the holiday season and, and just remind them of some of the supports and tools and resources available to them to get through it. I use an old Doug Miller trick also, uh, with some of my clients that have an RP plan, which is a relapse prevention plan. I tell them to pack that around twenty-four seven, so when they have a thought or a trigger, they open that up and review their relapse prevention and how to make a good choice in that situation. I don't know, it seems to be, at least this year, uh, coming out of the Christmas holiday, we have pretty calm waters. I don't have, I didn't hear of anybody spiraling or going off. So we're hoping the same will happen over the New Year's weekend, but we're out there uh, working with those high-risk clients and making sure they know we're watching. And we increase their urine testing too during this time, so that they have that other component in their brain to know that they're going to be tested aggressively. So with that being said, we'll see how New Year's goes. As far as cases, they're pretty steady right now. We had a big influx of new cases in October and early November. It's leveled out. Molly and I are both hovering in the fifties range for uh, direct supervised misdemeanor cases. DeeDee's looking at thirteen pre-trial people, which is down significantly from what it was earlier in the late summer, early fall. She's got no detention holds currently, seventeen cases, seven of them diversion, eight in community juveniles and one out of county. And then of course Steve's got about a hundred and thirty unsupervised cases. That's what I've got for y'all.
Good.
So much.
Good.
All right.
Thank you, George, for coming in. Need a break? Okay, our next one is HR, Risk Management, Mike. Good morning.
Good morning.
Did you enjoy all your family?
You got some good news?
Yeah, on the staffing front, I have some good news, just.
Want a cookie? Got fresh cookies up here.
Come get one. Uh, anyway, just want to let every, or let you all know that we did bring on uh, two new employees last week. I think I sent emails out to everybody. One with the road department, another road department tech. It is, I think, lives within sight of the Lake Fork uh, shop up there, the road department area up there, so he's going to be helping us out up there. And then we brought onboard our new IT systems analyst, uh, Kevin McNamara as well. So those were two hard to fill positions that we got some people in on those. And we have a job offer into another road department tech, a road maintenance tech. Um, a guy working in, he's got his own business, he's uh, accepted an offer for us. I'm hoping to get him onboard next week, um, so that's.
He's got CDLs or anything?
He's got the CDL already, yep. And we had two CDLs apply over the weekend for the job. Um, funny enough, both living at the same address, so I'm suspecting a husband and wife combo there for the CDL, so I've told Jeff, get your hooks in them. And in fact, they're just down Gold Dust Road too, so geography's really nice there for us as well, so probably figured they probably just moved into the valley and uh, looking for work, so.
Ms. Pat is at the door. We have to say hi to her and acknowledge.
Oh, my goodness.
I was just listening to your report.
I'm just giving them good news today.
Yeah, it sounds like.
We got some staffing bringing onboard. In fact, uh, 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 Mr. Stanbauer just sent me an email today, said if you could, please pull the patrol deputy announcement, so I think they are.
Oh, good news.
Good place there.
Excuse me, Mike, before you go on.
Oh, yeah.
Pat, are you gonna hang around for a while this morning? I need to talk to you about Alt history.
Well, when is your break?
Um, not too long.
Craig is filling out a passport, and I have to go to Sheriff's Office when we get done.
Probably about ten minutes. Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Mike.
You're here, and they're already putting you to work.
Passport, she's going out of country.
Um, we've got, uh, a number of applicants for our inventory system position, um, some strong candidates there. So, uh, Jeff has asked me to set up interviews for a couple of those, at least for a first round on those. Probably be interviewing next week, uh, for those. And then we also, last week, interviewed for the wildfire, uh, mitigation program director position. Commissioner Moplin was on that interview panel, and I believe we'll be making some recommendations moving forward with that, hopefully, uh, today. We do not have any applicants yet for our civil engineer position. We have over four hundred hits on that particular job announcement in the last month alone, so it's getting a lot of views. Um, we're just, I mean, we are saying we want a civil, a licensed civil engineer for that position, so that's obviously gonna hold us back on, uh, you know, who's available out there. But I did just get the results of a salary survey. We participate every year in a salary survey with the state of Idaho. Um, and they've got, they get market data on public and private sector positions. Civil engineer is one of the jobs in there that they have an exact match on, and our pay is right in the zone, right in the middle of that. So it isn't, uh, a pay issue for that. I think it's just availability. And we'll go like this until all of a sudden somebody's gonna apply, and that'll be like, there's the person we've been looking for.
Are you getting, uh, applications for, or at least people that are looking in on that out of state, not just in Idaho?
Uh, Commissioner, we've actually had two from out of country apply for that one, one in India and the other in Afghanistan, um, both civil engineers. Um, so if nothing else, the word is out around the globe, I'm just ideally trying to find somebody a little bit closer to home. But I also do my due diligence on their applications as well. Uh, you know, if we've got somebody, I don't care where they're from. They could be from Mars if they wanna work for us and they can get, and they can do the job, I'll hire them.
Mike, do you think maybe we oughta talk about maybe going out part-time for that position? Would that, would that encourage other folks that are already here that are retired to?
Possibly so, Commissioner. Uh, I think we could put in there that any flexibility scheduling would be considered. I think it, if nothing else, it could, um, open up some interest. We don't say it one way or the other. We just simply say it's a full-time position. Uh, but we aren't saying in the announcement anything like you must be in the office or anything. Um, but we could certainly try to sweeten the pot by saying, you know, flexible work conditions would be offered.
The third one is better than none at all.
Oh, I would agree.
Well, what's interesting is that many people know Valley County, you know, our recreation and availability and stuff up here. That's a huge plus right there. You would take.
And quite honestly, Commissioner, I'm surprised we don't have a civil engineer working down in the valley somewhere that's got a second home up here. That, I'm betting we do. They just aren't aware of the job yet. And so I'm still hitting my brain against the wall, trying to think of where else we can be recruiting for this job. By putting it on our website, the way we do with the tool that we have, it gets on, um, a couple of other websites. Indeed.com is one of them, and it is one of the, if not the largest, private sector, uh, job posting board out there. I also think that's the one that's gotten around the globe attention for us. And then also, we're on another website called GovernmentJobs.com, which is, of course, as the name implies, a huge private or public sector job posting board. If somebody's interested in working for us, I mean, our announcements are on those two websites as well as ours. And so, uh, we're getting the word out.
I think it's just a lack of engineers in the marketplace because every engineering firm in the, in the states are all looking for the same thing. I think it's just kids not going into engineering anymore.
Absolutely. Yeah. Um, that's all I have for here, for this morning, though.
Sounds like good news, though.
It is. Absolutely. People are applying, and what I'm excited about is that it is a very common New Year's resolution for people to say, now I'm gonna get that new job. So I'm excited about seeing some more applicants come pouring in here in January.
We had great applicants for the wildfire.
Did you guys like narrow that down, or what's, what's the plan there? Have you made your choice?
I think, uh, the commissioner will probably have some, uh, recommendations for you a little bit later on that, but absolutely real strong candidates.
Very strong candidates.
There's some good ones on there.
Yeah, we have a, we have a good problem on our hands with that one, I would say.
You found me a, I need another German, I need another about third-year apprentice.
Good luck with that.
I gave up.
You know, for what it's worth, Commissioner, we had somebody apply for the road department. He didn't have a Class A C.D.L., but he said he's an electrician. So I will.
Seriously?
I'll get your name, I'll get him, his name and number to you.
Yeah.
Cause he said he's either, he's down in the valley, but he said he'd be willing to relocate to Valley County, so maybe he's got accommodations. But I'll get his name and number to you.
There is nobody up here.
Not unless we're gonna hire him.
Wait, uh, just wait a minute here. What are we doing here? You might have to borrow him. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, Jeremy, come on up.
We hear you already fired your new helper.
No, he did not. Don't even say that. I had ether in the inner.
Good morning, um.
Good morning.
Not a lot to, to report, the holidays. Both, so our new guy did start on Thursday, or Wednesday. Um, we had some prior obligations for travel, so he's off for a few days, and, and, uh, my other employee was off for family for Christmas. So, um, was here by myself for a few days, but we get through it. I'm gonna post out an email. I'm gonna do some work this weekend, um, and further, instead of starting to upgrade some of our, some of our stuff with that equipment that I bought over the summer.
So you're all ready to go?
Yep. And then continue along with finishing off the various Tyler implementations, and that's still ongoing.
And Jeremy, I know you're busy, but have you started the process to get these for the annex? For the annex and McCall? Are we gonna do that this year?
Oh, yes. Yes, yeah, that was approved last. I, I just have to, I, and I already did, uh, let them know that we're gonna do those three doors, and it depends on their schedule when they can get us on to get somebody up here and get that all installed.
There was something in the email about that, wasn't there? About those doors. I don't know if it came from you, but there was something in our emails about.
Well, they were talking about doing the exterior and the interior doors, and we kinda decided to just go with the three exterior for now.
Just the perimeter.
And we could come back and do interiors if it's really needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
No, it's about, that's about all I got for our, yeah.
Can you be back for the eleven-thirty, Jeremy?
Yes, I'll be back for that. Yeah, I'll be back for the eleven-thirty discussion, absolutely.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good.
So is Tyler gonna be going on like probably all year, getting it totally implemented?
We'll be going live with recording in April, uh, and then the community developed component near the same time as, as well. Commissioner Thompson.
Hopefully, hopefully mid-year into summer, we should be fully transitioned away from computer arts and using Tyler, yep.
It'd be nice not to.
Yeah, these things take, uh, take a long time unfortunately to get everything moved over, so.
Amazing. Alrighty, thank you. Have a great day.
Hard work.
We got an email from Larry. You, you have it, Doug. You can amend that to this, I guess. And then I'd like to, um, let's see, where are we at here? Um, ask Kevin. Kevin, do you have anything you wanna report as far as waterways?
Uh, not till later this afternoon.
Okay.
Are you gonna leave that on there, Kevin? We've gotten word from Yelly that he wanted to bring it up in your waterways meeting. Okay, perfect. Okay.
Okay, so then our next agenda item is not until ten-thirty, so I guess we will, we'll mute and see everyone back here at ten-thirty.
So Larry's not around right now?
No. Did you get his email? He sent it to you.
Oh, I didn't see. Oh, there it is.